We'll call the February 2nd, 2021 meeting to order and we will start by honoring the country. Plausible allegiance, please.
What allegiance to the Bible, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, other god, indivisible, veritable, and just.
First item on the agenda today is probationary probation grant salary ordinance amendment and additional appropriations. Amy, would you like to speak on that, please? If you could talk into the microphone and introduce yourself and who you're with, please.
Good morning, I'm Amy Mott, I'm the chief probation officer here in Lake County. And the request that I have in front of you today, I have two staff members, one probation officer and one field officer that is funded by the Department of Public Insurance. The grant came out this year and it's only been approved for six months, we're hoping this is the second six months, it's been through, it's been out like years. But what they did approve did not include the three. And as a probation officer, for those that don't know, our salaries are set by the state of Indiana. So the county is required to pay what the state says we have to be paid, and so that does not cover that raise for my probation officer, and it also did not give any raise to my field officer. So I'm asking for the county if they would, if you all would pay the difference so that both of the staff members can be paid what's comparable to others.
Lost, does the grant not cover all the time or some years it covers all of it, other years it doesn't?
They would not, it's a couple of cycles, but it's pretty good.
Okay. Okay. So are we being asked to approve just the county general expenditure or to actually approve the expenditure of the grant funds as well?
We're doing the county general portion of it. That's what we're approving. The grant funds are already there and have been, are part of the budget and available for her to spend.
And I make a motion that we approve the county general expenditure to bring the Department of Probation salaries to the specified.
Amy, what's the total on that? Is that on the back here?
Thirty-five, nineteen fifty-four.
Okay, thank you. Make a motion, not seconds of motion.
That's good.
We have a motion in the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, let be shown it was passed unanimously with all board members present. Thank you, Amy. Community corrections, please, Paula.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
Paula Warden, Director, can you question, I did not prepare any of this paperwork, is my understanding that just one of our grant positions got missed when they advertised the budget. That's what's in it.
Yeah, and then also Paula's increase.
And which is going to be funded through the grant.
Yeah.
But it was not advertised correctly.
So there's the.
So the increase is the thirty-five, one fifty-three?
For the assistant.
For the assistant, right. And then the second one is for eighteen twenty-seven.
That's, so which one do you need to sign?
All, all three.
Okay.
So it says salary ordinance amendment for the coordinated for her increase, this is for the assistant for her full salary, and that's for the increase.
So total thirty-seven. So over thirty-seven thousand, do you have that amount?
And these monies are in the grant?
Yes.
Thirty-six thousand ninety.
Total thirty-six, nine eighty.
I move, will we approve the amount requested? Second.
Ever a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote, all those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, and it was passed unanimously with all board members present.
And I'm working on an annual report for all of you. I'm happy to report, finally, we're out of the red in our project income, so we're slowly getting back on track. But I'll, I'm going to detail fiscal report and also programming and service report, hopefully have it to you by Thursday.
Just in general, having helped receive the grants, how does it look on the impact for the budgeted funds from county general for community corrections?
For twenty twenty-two, I should not have to request near as much, but I will need some support. Just because I don't expect that we'll be, you know, we're already in twenty twenty-one, they're projecting that we'll be in the red probably through February. But we're slowly increasing programs, but a lot of the court cases have been set out to May, June, and July, so we're just not seeing cases get resolved as quick as we have in the past, but you know, I hate to say for sure, but I, you know, our project income is out of red, so I think that's good. Normally, we would generate when we're operating between sixty-five and seventy, most of our work really, really, we generate between eighty and eighty-eight thousand a month. Now we're back to generating fifty-five thousand a month, so just thinking up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you, Paula.
Next is a salary ornament, ordinance amendment from the Health Department, please.
Morning.
Morning.
I think it's just a change, we kind of got our wires crossed at the beginning, can you hear me?
Introduce yourself, please, I'm sorry. And Scott, while we have you here, you have another item on the agenda, so if you want to just follow up with that after this one, that would be fine.
Thank you. So like I said at the beginning, usually Carly gets paid out of eleven sixty-eight, again, this is her first full-time year, so I think this was cool confusing at the beginning here, so eleven sixty-eight is the correct grant that she gets paid out of. And when we brought her off full-time, that was the request of the council to pay her out of the fund, and then I'll then have her from the taxpayers, so that's where the money is coming out of, just, that's what we would normally use to pay her, it's not a change or anything, so.
And that's for fifteen thousand eighty-three dollars.
Right.
So have you got it changed so it doesn't come out of that fund ninety-three twenty-one next year?
Yeah, we have it set now, so.
Okay, yeah, set now, so it will come out of eleven sixty-eight, okay.
But you'll always use those funds though, right? Or, well, not always, but that's what we talked about.
So for many, many years, Heather Reed, our public health nurse, was paid partly out of a grant, partly out of this. And then a couple of years back, we were able to bring her full-time onto the tax roll, and then Carly jumped in the part-time out of the fund and out of the taxpayers' payers' role, so yes, as long as we don't need to hire somebody else out of there, right, we should be okay to keep on splitting that way for now, whenever long as you guys want to do that. And just like Jackie, who works in with the clinic, she gets paid out of the other fund for her salary for that too, so.
Yep. So this is just covering the difference?
Yeah.
Sorry, Scott, I do, I actually, and I thought it was tobacco settlement, the twelve oh six.
It'd be the, shouldn't it be a trust grant, or no? One of the, I know that the health fund should be Jackie, the health maintenance.
Right, yeah, and that's, that's where the clerk is, but I think twelve oh six.
It can be twelve oh six, or eleven sixty-eight, whatever one you prefer, you just gotta get sure which one we know.
Yep, twelve oh six.
So our paperwork is good then as far as the health tobacco, from the tobacco settlement?
No, there's tobacco, there's a trust.
Okay.
I make a motion for the amendment of the salary ordinance for the health educator to come from eleven sixty-eight instead of ninety-three twenty-one.
Twelve oh six.
Twelve oh six, I'm sorry.
Okay, twelve oh six.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, let be shown it was passed unanimously with all board members present.
The second item was passed by the commissioners, just a favorable pass to allow the whip director to receive eligibility for full-time benefits. We hired her on with that assumption because the state reimburses all the funds for that position. When she was hired on, we convinced the state to do thirty-five hours, making her full-time, the position's never been full-time before. And the reason why is we could never find anybody to cover a part-time position, so when she came on, we petitioned the state to make that a full-time one. And at that time, we did ask the state if she were to take insurance and eligible benefits from the county that they would be reimbursable, and they said yes. So we just wanted to make sure that she is eligible, the reason why we're coming to you today because in two thousand seventeen, that was withdrawn for that position, eligibility requirements. So we just want to bring that back and see if that can be put back on.
Oh, sick, okay, so I'm confused, I thought what the item on the agenda today was you asking for a part-time position.
Well, that's the third item, sorry. Sorry.
Okay, I didn't have any information on that.
Okay.
On the, on the second item.
Yeah, on the whip director, the insurance is through, it's through a grant, and so the commissioners have provided a favorable pass to the council as it isn't coming out of any of our funds at all. And it's, it's an oversight role, is what it was from when the whip director was, was hired, because she was full-time and eligible for health insurance.
So the state is reimbursing those monies to cover her health benefits?
Yes. Yes, the, the whip is, the Health Department sponsors the whip program locally and offers them a location. But everything, our computers, administrative costs, all that stuff is reimbursed in our salaries, reimbursed through the state. So we pay them and then we're reimbursed to the state, all those funds, so.
And why are we being asked to approve that this specific position of be eligible?
Well, it was really an oversight when she started, it was in Two thousand seventeen. Yeah, seventeen, and that's when we changed over our insurance where it was only that no part-time people could get health insurance. And so it kind of slipped by that she went from part-time to full-time. And, and because it was a grant position. She was adherent two thousand seventeen, so the current person was a part-time person. So when she was hiring at that, I didn't even know that that was excluded at that time, so we found an error this year, and we want to make sure that was corrected in minutes and approved, so.
So the question is to approve this position as a full-time eligible for benefits?
No, it's already been approved as a full-time, it's just that approving health benefits, health insurance benefits for this position is really what we're looking at right now. Because it is approved as a full-time, it's paid by a grant as thirty-five hours a week.
This does not affect county general?
The motion, we approve the request. Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? I will take this opportunity just to put the information out there, again, it's somewhat related to your request, and this isn't directly targeted at you, but this is the exact reason why we switched a couple of years ago to make sure that we have a deadline for all information that council is going to be requested to look at. This particular item is very easy, but it didn't, it didn't make even an email saying that this was going to be presented today, and that disappoints me a little bit just because of the fact that we know nothing about it, and to discussion about it, and then it requires a lot more time, rather than if we have information beforehand and we can reach out to department heads. So I would reiterate at this time that anything that needs to be on council's issue or agenda needs to be to Jana within, we set a two-week time limit on a Wednesday before the meeting, right? So if it doesn't make that deadline, then we don't get the information, then it's probably not going to make the meeting, and just for the purpose of allowing council to have time to investigate and do their homework. That's not saying that there won't be exceptions, but the information still needs to be provided. So I'll get off the soapbox on that, and if there's any further discussion, hearing none, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, and let be shown it was passed unanimously with all members present. You still have the floor, sir?
Sure, so a third item, hiring a temporary part-time person to pay out existing monies in the Health Department fund. With the advent of the vaccine clinics, which started fairly quickly, beginning of the year, we didn't know when they were coming or what was happening. And we went from the first week having a hundred doses to the second week having five hundred, and now to the fourth week having a thousand. So it has moved extremely fast and quick, and basically telling us a day ahead of time on the state. Do you want this? Okay, you have to tell us by tomorrow. So in order to fill those schedules and to make sure everybody's registered, we had to hire a temporary part-time person to make those phone calls. No offense to anybody in the seventy, eighty-year-old group, but sometimes it's difficult for them to navigate the internet, and this process to get registered is very confusing. And we had a lot of difficult time with getting people registered. So we've been using the availability time, like yesterday had April and Vicky both calling people, getting registered, make sure everything's complete, so when they get here, we don't have to have them stand in line and back up the doorway. Today, we finally got our schedule up and going completely, which the state controls, we don't have any control over it. But we're having five people per ten minutes in the clinic with three vaccinators, so we're really hopping today. If we can do that for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, we can get a thousand doses in a week. So that's where our, our goal is, and even most of the other surrounding counties, except for Allen County, don't even have that, so we're really pushing the envelope for our small rural community to be able to do that many vaccinations in a week. But in order to do that, we have to have the volunteers, and we've got to have people on the phones, and we just weren't able to say, we're able to do that, we had to get somebody in here, so brought in Vicky Western, and she is working twenty-nine and a half or less hours a week. Using our part-time paid fund out of the health department budget to pay her on that, and it should be just temporary, it should be no more than April. And then she will have to find another job or something, so it's a couple of months to get us through this push of vaccinations, and then we should be good to go. So I apologize that we weren't able to bring that to the personnel committee because it was so, such a need so fast. We went to commissioners and they thought about bringing in a temp agency, but this was cheaper and easier to do, so that's what we did.
You know, I'd like to make a comment on that, I commend the Health Department, I mean, it's fabulous how you've come together to do that, I know how difficult it has been. I, I fully support it, but you've got to realize that emergencies do happen, and this is an emergency to go from a hundred to a thousand, that's, that's astounding.
Yeah, we're, we're, I talked to St. Ben County, and they're, they're hoping they could get that, but they don't even have it to do it, so.
That's impressive.
We're really pushing it, thanks to Parkview, Whitley for their volunteers, thanks to the Army National Guard who have people here helping with that as well. So without those two organizations, we'd be really drowning, so they're a big help as well. We did have an incident, if you heard about this, we did have an incident last Monday night where we had a gentleman pass away in the Health Department clinic. He came in from Fort Wayne with his daughter, and while she was parking the car, he coded. We started CPR right away, I got the AED on him right away, within two minutes. He was shocked and continued breathing and CPR on him until the EMS got here, and then they continued to work on him for forty-five minutes, but to no avail, so we made sure that the staff was, had an opportunity for any counseling or anything like that, and we had two of our commissioners there, so it was a difficult thing for us to go through, we usually don't experience that here in this building, but.
And I think it's important when you hear about this to communicate it was not a reaction.
No.
He had not had an injection, this was prior to that.
Had a cardiac event prior to.
Well, it sounds like everyone reacted appropriately.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything we could have done differently, we got right out of the chair, started right away, we did everything appropriately, it just didn't work out for him.
It's too bad.
I make a motion, we approve the temporary part-time position for COVID clinics to be paid for out of existing Health Department funds.
I second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. And those opposed the same, and it passes unanimously with all members present.
Would you like us to update?
Absolutely.
So we are still going to be red this week, we're also missing the, the percentage by just a small bit, we have to be fifteen percent or less on our positivity every week to get down into the orange, and we've missed it the last two weeks by just a couple percentages, which means we're still one of the most restricted counties in the state at this time. The governor did change his orders this last week, uh, for twenty-five percent capacity of a room for gatherings and events, which does increase a little bit. There is no current public health order locally where we had before, we felt that the numbers were coming down, and now that that could be excused. So right now, local people only have to deal with, with the governor saying there's no existing public health order here. So still mask mandate, still the restrictions on the twenty-five percent, if we do go to orange, that raises it to fifty percent for events and gatherings, so we are seeing less positivities, we are seeing less, people getting sick with that. But again, we're happy to report that in northeast Indiana, we are significantly less on our desks to report at this, at this time. We're at twenty-six, and our closest county is at thirty-seven, so our surrounding counties are obviously much more higher than us, so even though we have a lot of sickness going on, we're still keeping our desk really low, which is great, so.
And Scott, do those numbers include Whitley County residents who are tested in other counties?
Yes, so it goes by your residency, unlike if you pass away in another county, this does go, so if you go to Allen County and get tested, it reports for Whitley County. And if you look at our testing and our number of positive persons, it's right in line with our population as compared to other counties. There's, there's no lack of us getting tested, there's no lack of us having positive persons, so we're right in the mix.
And I see, working at the school corporation, I see how busy and how active and how proactive they are with all their contact tracing. And I know they're working hand-in-hand with you guys, and those stats are being passed back and forth.
Yes, so as soon as they get a positive person or, and every day they send home kids, I get that report, and I send out emails to those families. So if they get positive results or they're close contacts, we send that, or they go home with sickness, they get an email from the Health Department about what their quarantine looks like and how far they have to stay out from school, so. And I usually talk to the nurses almost every day in school conferences, but they've had a, the second week of January, they really had a tough go at, they had around two hundred kids get sent home from high school only, that's why they had to go to remote learning for two weeks. We're still seeing a little bit, numbers in grade schools going home still, all corporations, so it's still out there, it's winter time, it's hard to know what sickness it is, they do get tested, but sometimes there's a crossover on some of that stuff, so.
Yep.
But we'll keep on fighting it, I think, hopefully by the end of March, we'll have seven to eight thousand vaccinations in the arms of Whitley County people, and you know, like it's just over twenty-five percent of the people.
Thank you, Scott, for everything you're doing, I appreciate it.
One more quick question, Scott, how long do you anticipate the shot clinics to go on?
At least through March, we are booking through March right now. Our belief is with Walmart and Kroger and Myers coming online, and possibly even CBS, and all of these getting back into it, that the, the need will go down closer to the end of March. All right, now they're opening up to sixty-five and older, I anticipate by the end of February, they'll be opening that up to at least sixty, or if not in the fifties. I think once we get most of the fifties and older done, there won't be as much need because younger people aren't wanting it as badly, they're not having as much illness with that, so you'll see a little bit decrease with that. But I think we'll be busy with shots, not necessarily maybe four times a week, but we'll have COVID shots through the summertime. Especially in anticipation of coming fall, and we don't know if the CDC is going to recommend this be a seasonal thing, or if it's just once, you know, ever, it probably will be a seasonal thing for certain people, especially in age groups or something like that, as they get to know. You know, we don't know right now how long the immunity lasts from the vaccination, and especially if you're sixty-five and older, they're probably going to say it's only good for a year, like a flu shot, so you need to get it again the next year. So we'll have to look at that. It all depends on how many people continues to kill nationwide, because you know, the flu, everybody's supposed to get the flu shot, but we never have a flu clinic. So we'll see what happens with that, but I do anticipate at least into April, May, for sure, maybe not at four times a week, but at least a couple of times a week, probably till then. But I think that once we get through the fifties, it'll decrease a little bit, so. Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sheriff Gatten, please.
Morning, Mark Gatton, Whitley County Sheriff's Department. Today I come before you not for a vote, but I'm bringing you information, I'll be back next month in reference to a study for a special retirement, early retirement at the sheriff's department. This actually started last year, and then with COVID hitting, it kind of stalled out, I couldn't have all the proper meetings. So in November, had a meeting with the merit board, they made their recommendations. I brought each a partial of the book, we were only given one book of the study, so I'll leave it so you guys can look at it. I didn't take the time to scan it all in because I didn't want to rip the book up, so I kind of got the highlights here. One of the things I'm looking at, the reason to change it, is there's a lot of departments that the retirement age is less than fifty-five. So that's a benefit a lot of people are looking at, and with the evolution of the way the police world is going, it's not common anymore to see people stick around till they're sixty or seventy. It's, it's kind of more of a young man's game now, it is. I'm not asking for any vote today on anything, I'm just going to pass this out, and then over the next month, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me with the changes, the two scenarios they did right now were fifty-five and twenty years of service. The two scenarios they did are a special retirement age fifty-two with twenty-five years of service, so you'd have to gain five more years to draw at that. Another one they looked at was fifty with at least twenty years of service, so that's going to increase the twenty-five years of service and age fifty-two will increase the current contribution by one point three percent of the payroll. And under scenario one of the, or two of the fifty and twenty years, it'd be a three point six percent of payroll. Within the next, before the next meeting, I'll also send you some information about how many counties around us and how other departments are doing their retirement. So today, I'm just here to drop off this information, it comes before you as council because you're the fiscal body. And the merit board, like I said, can make a recommendation, but ultimately, it's up to you guys to decide.
Did you say you were going to get that information before the next board meeting to get it to us so we can see it before the meeting?
Yeah, I'll get it out here for the counties around us and departments that are doing it a little bit different.
Mark, do we have a mandatory age for retirement?
We do not.
Is that part of the proposal?
Do you want me to make sure that you get this?
Yeah, that's right there, I'm giving that to you, that's the whole study, please keep in mind the numbers that are in there. They base off of if everybody stays till They base off of if everybody stays till their retirement age plus what we have to drop of three years, so. Numbers in there can fluctuate. Please remember that by people retiring earlier. Current people that are drawing on the pension falling off. Right now, the numbers are in there with all the well, people drawing off of the pension plan and the active employees. The age in there has went down because one of the people has retired and retired somebody younger for the average age and the years of service that also have also went down compared to when that study was made.
Does this study in any way indicate how many officers you would anticipate retiring in the next two, five years?
Yeah, that study will show throughout the years of these elements can retire with full benefits.
Thank you.
Any further questions today?
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, thank you.
Brandon Forster, please.
Good morning. Brandon Forster, county engineer and highway director. So I am here to request an additional appropriation for the highway department. And if I could, I'd also like to introduce something that we're thinking and talking about for future, no decisions. And I don't have any information. You can share it with me at this time, but. Regarding the additional appropriation, the Department of Local Government Finance, we had to cut our budget by six hundred eight thousand, two hundred forty-two dollars, which we did. And that was based on their revenue projections and the balances as of June thirtieth. So I was thinking about this this morning. I wish they would kind of wait a little later in the year to or look at later in the year data to make that decision, because by June thirtieth, we're get just getting geared up for our summer program where we spend the majority of our money. So the good news is we didn't spend all the money in the budget. They assume you spent are going to spend all the money in the budget. We didn't. So there is. Oh, actually, I think January first, there was one point two million on the cash page. So the money is there and the request for the additional appropriation is six hundred eight thousand, two hundred forty-two, which is the amount that we had to cut our budget.
And where, just explain to us where that money is coming from. It's not coming out of county general.
No, this is all highway, VH.
So it's money that's already there. You just need to transfer it into the new budget because it was cut by the state.
Right.
And this isn't any different than what you already explained to us previously to warn us beforehand.
I, this is what I, yeah, I came last month to give you a heads up. Yeah, we had to advertise for an additional.
And will this allow you to stay on track with your long-term plan?
Exactly, yes.
So when does that start to hurt you? I mean, if we you take that amount of money away from your one point two, then I'm assuming somewhere along the line, that money, you're going to be hurting for that money.
Well, if you look at the line items that we have in our budget for materials, because that's, you know, that's what we look at for our road program. Labor benefits, administrative expenses, you know, shop supplies, things like that. That's pretty much fixed. But where we cut was in our bituminous or asphalt line item. We have bituminous and we have stone and gravel. The total amount originally budgeted was about one point three million. So if we cut six hundred eight thousand out of that, that's half of our budget. We're going to have to eliminate something from our road program. So, and that's sixty miles of chip seal or our community crossings or gravel road conversions, so. I mean, it's not going to hurt me tomorrow. It's just moving forward with our plan that we have. We need to have that money in and it's available.
And there is income coming into this one point two million dollar fund?
Every month.
Every month?
Yes.
So we're not going to deplete that?
No, no, it we we I'm going to say, because it varies, because it's all fuel tax. So more people are driving, more money we get, but I'll say between hundred and thirty and hundred and sixty thousand a month.
So at this time next year, we should be back over a million?
Well, yes.
Theoretically, theoretically.
I think the cash balance last year was about six or seven hundred thousand. So and years prior, maybe three hundred thousand, you know, it it varies. I I would rather not spend all the money and have a little insurance than have to than to spend more money and come to you at the end of the year because I overspent. So we have money at the end of the year. It's available.
And at the same time, we're not solving a short-term problem with creating a long-term problem. Because the funds will continue to accumulate.
Correct.
May I add something? And I just want you guys, I just want to make sure you guys understand, like, you guys already did approve this technically. Okay, yeah, so this is because, you know, after you guys approved the budget in October, the state came back, said, we're going to cut it, and this is the way that George Hilton told us that we needed to handle it, so. We tried to, we tried to see if we could amend the seventeen eighty-two notices, but he said this is the way that we needed to handle it, so.
Was this cut because of the road tax? I mean, the gas tax, people not driving? Is that why this was cut?
Well, I mean, ultimately, my my position is it was cut because the DLGF looks at the numbers on June thirtieth. On June thirtieth, we had a large amount still available in our budget because we hadn't spent all of our money on chip sealing and paving for community crossings. So they assumed we were going to spend every penny of that, and they also apply a projection for revenue, and they had sent out a memo background budget time that told us that we should expect an eighty percent decrease, I'm sorry, a twenty percent decrease in revenue for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty percent decrease of twenty, twenty twenty in twenty twenty-one. Now, that says that we're going to get twenty percent less fuel purchased in twenty-one than what we did in twenty. I think that's my personal opinion, way over conservative. Our revenues in twenty twenty were not down that much versus nineteen, but that's the way they look at it. They look at your numbers on June thirtieth, and then they have a revenue projection.
You're not allowed to carry your figures, then they withdraw that on June, in the June thirtieth or whatever time it was that they look at your budget. Is that what I how I'm understanding that? You can't have carryovers?
I'm not sure what you mean by carryovers, but they were looking at at the cash balance and the amount to be spent in the budget. And I mean, there's a, they have a spreadsheet.
So this was the balance left that wasn't held out for anything, so they're taking it back, is how I'm understanding it.
Well, when they did their calculations, they said that there wouldn't be enough revenue to support the budget that I presented and you approved.
And when was that?
Well, it was approved in October.
Okay. Well, I know this has been discussed a few times. Okay, I just wondered, you know, for future purposes to pre-spend, maybe?
I I'm not sure how well to explain it other than we're at the mercy of the state and whatever they say. I I don't agree with their revenue projections, and if they would project to higher, we wouldn't be here right now. If they would have looked at the information that Janet presented at the end of the year, she gave them hard numbers. This is the amount of money left in our budget at the end of the year. We are not going to spend any more money. This is our cash balance. There's money to support the budget. And they said, no, that's, what were the words?
It's estimated, even though we knew there are hard numbers.
We can't base a decision on a guess, I think, the term that was used, so.
Even though that's what they do in June?
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's a shame. That's a lot of money.
Just jumping through hoops.
I I appreciate the fact and applaud you for not just spending it right down to the nickel and keeping some money back. I mean, I know that that's important to do. It's just, you're going to be probably tasked with that challenge of trying to determine what you need to spend and what projects you can do and 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 maybe cut it thinner, and that's going to be putting you in a hard position.
Well, I I mean, I, you know, not to try and make you feel sorry for me, but it is a challenge.
Yeah.
Because we're, I'm putting together a budget in June or July, and I've got DLGF and their calculations. I've got community crossings, which is an unknown. I just submitted an application for a community crossings project, which I won't know if it gets approved until probably March or April. There are a lot of variables. You know, we put together a plan, assuming that we're going to get the money that we're asking for. And if something happens that we don't, then we'll have to modify our plan.
Make a motion. We approve the additional appropriation for the motor vehicle highway fund.
Second, second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussions? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. Those opposed the same, and let it be shown to us past unanimously with all members present.
And then I'll try and make this, which is possible, just an introduction, so I'll be back with information, but. What we've done historically with new trucks is we we like to buy them in pairs. That way, you know, because they change every every year with models. So if we can get two at a time, we get parts and service recalls, things like that go together, so. We have three hundred thousand budgeted in local road and street, which is also a gas tax money. In nineteen, in preparation for the twenty budget, I asked for basically a commitment, verbal commitment to approve that budget for twenty twenty, so then now we've had six hundred thousand and we could order two trucks and bid two trucks at the same time. And so again, we have three hundred thousand budgeted. Last time I waited until budget time, we've learned since then that, and and we've actually reached out to our supplier. Haven't got anything back from them yet, but I'm not sure how far they are out. If we would order a truck today, we might not get it till next year. So what I will come here in the future sometime, once we get some facts together, is verbal commitment to budget money for twenty-two with possibility of encumbering money from twenty-one into twenty-two, depending on when we can get two trucks. But what we're looking at and our plan was to get a tandem truck this year and a tandem truck next year. I'm just kind of trying to pull it in to one purchase so we can get sister trucks. So I'll be back with more information on that. Just wanted to put it out there. You can think about it, ask me questions. And I'll be back on that.
Thank you, Brandon.
Okay, thank you.
And if I'm looking at the proper agenda, it would be time for the commissioner report, please.
Okay, commissioners have been pretty busy lately. We did receive yesterday an IPEP grant of ten thousand four hundred dollars from our IPEP is our workman's cap carrier. And so what they did is to help us out with safety equipment, they granted us ten thousand four hundred dollars, which Katie Frye and and Brandon really worked hard to get that taken care of, and we appreciate that. We got a contract for the humane shelter for a memorandum of understanding for twenty-five thousand dollars to come out of CEDAT for the next year for twenty twenty-one is what it would be. And we're going to ask for approval of that also from council. And then that's what it's been for the last at least ten years that I know of. But if you'd like to make a vote on that, I would appreciate that.
Is that in the original CEDAT plan?
Yes.
That we approved?
Yes.
Do we need to approve it a second time?
Well, what what I'd like to do in twenty twenty-one, which would make this a lot easier, is if we could go ahead and approve the appropriation for the CEDAT plan, and we just present you with the projects for the CEDAT plan as we go. Right now, we have a CEDAT plan that we can present to you probably within the next month. And then anything after that, normally over five thousand dollars, we'll try to bring it to the council and and get your approval on. So to make it easier, if you would just and we did this last year, approve the appropriation for the commissioners of the, it's, I think it's one point three million for twenty twenty-one.
That's the CEDAT budget.
And that is the CEDAT budget.
So essentially, we we already have approved it in the past, up until three years ago. It was required that the commissioners come back to us to spend the CEDAT money after we've already approved it into their budget. We changed it three years ago to give them the authority to make those expenditures because it has been approved in their budget, so. I think it would take care of this detail you're asking for today, along with everything else, if if we would, if council would be in favor of just granting that authority to spend that budget.
George, I'd be in agreement of it. If you was able, if you was going to change something in the, you know, in that, you would let us know before, you know, a project would come up that you wanted to change. It wasn't in there originally?
Sure.
And something would come up and you needed to spend some money for that, if you'd let us know before that.
Or even if there was a change to one of them that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something like that.
And the only, the only difference there would be is we do have that onsite, offsite, that we've been using that for the on different projects, but what we can do is anytime, any, even the onsite, offsite, go ahead and present to council, at least let you know exactly what's going on on that. Now, that wouldn't be an issue at all.
Make a motion. We've authorized the commissioners to expend the funds in their previously approved budget on the budget items that have been approved.
Second. And that's with the expectation that they would come forward or they would come back to us if anything would change?
Yes.
Before the expenditure. Okay. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand, and those opposed the same, and it passes unanimously with all board members present.
Thank you. In looking at the claims within the last couple of months, we've had some issues with CenturyLink. We changed to a internet-based telephone system, which was supposed to save us money. And it just seems like we're getting more bills from CenturyLink. Kami has been trying to work with them to understand why we're getting the billing. That's something we're really, we're working on right now because it's, I'll get SDS involved in it and but that's the probably the one issue with claims that we're having right now. We'll get that taken care of. We're, the things that we're working on right now is radio issues with dispatch. I think we've got a answer for the dispatch. We've we've had issues for years and years with dispatch, and what we're going to do is we'll bring this before you also is is it's about twenty-nine thousand dollars to raise the, we're going to use the J and K antenna for our radio dispatch, and we haven't yet disapproved through the sheriff. And we haven't got this approved through the sheriff or anybody yet. But what we're doing is is we're getting a committee together to make sure that that's a proper way to do this. But we've we had a. A consultant come in and work with us on this that. J and K is willing to let us use their antenna for. It's a dollar a foot per month, so for $300 a month, we're going to use J and K's antenna. We bumped our wattage up from 40, I think it's 45 watts to 275 watts. And so what's what's happening is going to be right now, we have repeaters around all the different fire departments. And that's it repeats for our our deputies and for the fire departments. And and they they fight against each other because there are different repeaters in in the community and and all the different communities. So what we're doing now is using one antenna to reach. Out to all the different, the cars, the fire departments, and we aren't going to have the repeaters working against each other. So that's where we're we're looking at right now. I don't know if I explained it very good, but it it's a matter of height and power to make sure that we can eliminate. The repeaters. And the only the only problem we'll have is in South Woodley. And in South Woodley, we we can use a green leg. And we'll have to shield that green leg so that doesn't act like it'll be a repeater, but we've got to shield the repeater. So it doesn't cause issues with with everything else. But it sounds like. It's a short term, meaning five to 10 year solution. Until we decide what we're going to do with with dispatch as far as new equipment. The equipment we've got right now is is actually top of the line equipment. It's just that it hasn't worked right because of the the antenna system that we've had in the repeater system. So I I think we've come up with with a solution on that. But we're right now, we're getting we're meeting with the sheriff. We're going to meet with EMA just to make sure the fire departments, to make sure that everybody is on board with that. But it sounds like a good solution and and we've been approved for. The extra power, the 275 watts from the FCC, we've already got approved for that.
George, excuse me. On the repeaters, why aren't those repeaters the same as the tower here at J and K? I I guess I didn't realize that there was different repeaters. I thought they were all matched to this main tower at J and K.
Well, the repeaters are out at the different fire departments, most of them. Okay. What's happening with those repeaters? Our antenna is sending in a signal out, okay? And those repeaters get it. And the repeaters are trying to find actually. It's it's hard to explain. Yeah. But they're working against each other. There should be a little bit of a pause for each one of those repeaters, which again causes problems to do that. We've had this problem for, I don't know, probably. 10 years that I know of here. And they've tried and tried to fix that and we did get this consultant in. And the consultant, I think is the sheriff here, Jason. The sheriff or the consultant seems to know what he's doing, don't you think?
Everything he's everything he's.
Yeah. But it's going to simplify everything completely because we're going to get rid of the repeaters. It'll help the fire departments. It's going to help our VHS system, BHF system and. It's it's something that should have been done a long time ago. Why it wasn't, I don't know, but we're getting it taken care of. And again, it's going to be a $29,860 cost us. Most of that is J and K is eating all the. All the labor on this and they're charging us for half of. The equipment. So it could be a lot more expensive. And part of this also is because of the the fact that we're going to have at J and K's antenna, that 300 foot antenna. We have to have one of those trailers in the bottom to hold our equipment. And it has to be air conditioned. It has to have a generator and it has to be shielded so that if ice would come off of the antenna that it it wouldn't damage the the building. And that's in this $29,000 cost. But we haven't really. Met with the sheriff and EMA and I think next this next Friday, we're meeting with them just. But we want to make sure that everybody's on board with this before we do that. And I I think it's a solution for all the issues that we've had with with dispatch at this point. The the next thing I think is new HTs that we're going to have to come up with. And the sheriff's dealing with with the HTs. But. I think it's a great solution for us. Any questions on that at all?
What is the how the height of that tower?
It's right at 300 foot. I think we're going to be at 297 or, you know, just.
We're buying penthouse space.
Yeah. Well, normally that the dollar a foot would be a lot more than that, but they made concessions with us on that.
But I just know that ours is 150 and we can pick up the fire department.
Yeah. Yeah.
George, how what's the timeframe on the 29,000?
We're hoping to have that done.
No, I mean, how long does this cover a year? Does this cover the entire project?
That covers the project.
Okay.
So the only other option or the other cost after that is the $300 a month for the antenna.
Okay.
For the rental of the antenna. But it's going to be a safety issue for all of our deputies that in the fire department that. We're not fighting that constantly, even with the emergency buttons. It's been an issue with that, so. We're anxious to see that in operation and we'll get we will be coming to to council on that. Broadband. Teresa's been working pretty closely with getting a broadband committee together. And what we're doing is is trying to get something so that. Someone is is working on broadband grants, any any kind of issues that we can come up with to help us to get. Working with RMC, doing anything. To get broadband to our community. We've already got the the Mercury Wireless. Not sure how that's working yet. It's early January 1st is when that was in operation. So we're we're working on that right now, but. We're, you know, one of our major issues is getting broadband to to Woodley County and and getting a decent broadband. A good pricing and good service. That's. So hopefully we can get that taken care of. Teresa, did you want to say anything on that? Yeah. Okay. Next one is our big one is jail overcrowding. We're still working on that. We've got a needs study that we just got. We're working with that need study, but we're getting close. We'll be talking to to council about what our options are. We're doing a land acquisition now, as you know. And but we're looking at all options of what we do at the jails, you know. We don't want to just build a jail. It's that's not the thing we want to do. We're looking into this to to make sure that whatever. Tax monies that we we expend that it it's the right thing to do for the next 20 years. So that's a huge time. Study for us. It's. One thing we do have our health insurance trust is. We've paid four payments last year out of our health and health trust for our health. Account, which is about 130,000 a month. And it's come out of our trust because we're our wellness program is doing so well. We Carly's done a great job with the wellness program. COVID has made a difference where people aren't going to the the doctor as much as they do. But that that program as the trust builds and gets up into the 500,000 range, we'd usually just pay a payment, one of our health payments out of that. So that's been a great help to us. And for our general fund eventually. And I guess that's it right now. Any questions about anything? Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the minutes, please. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as they were presented to you? Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. Those opposed the same and the minutes were passed unanimously with all members present. One additional request to be on the agenda today for information purposes only was Carly LaRue. So I'm going to go ahead and call her forward at this time. And if you would just introduce yourself, Carly and jump right in.
Hi, I'm Dawn Telfer, also representing Dr. Willie County. So our funding is a little bit different. You guys have some oversight on it, so really our finance committee is the one that makes where our grant funds go. So we can have funds around drug and alcohol counter metering. And then put them back into the community intervention treatments and intervention fund. So we're giving out these credits this year, but the state does ask that you guys give us just a. Letter of pro now, letter of. Motion of support, I guess, in a way that we can go ahead and go see with giving out these grants. I'm here if you guys have any questions.
You guys have any questions, Carly?
So does each department have to write a grant for that? Like the Sullivan Police Department's got two on here. They had to write grants and apply them and then.
Yeah. They applied to our finance committee and they selected.
Okay.
We do have to meet the state requirements for certain categories for each category. So that's why I think some of them are able to set the limits of funds, but we can meet that percentage requirement by state.
Okay.
So we will have a vote of approval for this. For for the request, I guess I will just ask for a. We'll do it in the form of a motion, I'm sorry. So I would call for you to motion or any other questions from Carly, please. I move we approve our proof. Second. I have a second, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. Those opposed the same and it passed unanimously with all members present. Councilman Barrett.
I have nothing.
Councilwoman Western. Councilwoman Albright.
No.
Thank you.
Councilman Warner.
I have nothing.
Just want to inform the council that the personnel committee met this last month to respond to a request for job reclassification circuit court. And we will be bringing that at the market meeting with the recommendation to pass.
Vice Chair, where?
I have none.
The only matter that I still have open that I'd like to. Kind of come to a conclusion with is the council's involvement and relationship with region 3A. Has everyone had a chance to do a little bit of homework on that? Come up with a idea on how we like to proceed.
Mr. Chairman. Years ago, when I was a commissioner, I served on that board 3A. I would volunteer to go to those meetings and see what it pertains to and report back to council.
So to recap, we have been offered a year of. Involvement with a member on the board with no expectation of cost or funds coming from us. So that would be, if you're willing to do that, that would be. That would be okay. Because we're they're not they're still not expecting anything from us at this point and maybe have a opportunity to reevaluate. Is it something that we? Need or want to be involved with again?
It's it's struggled for years. It struggled back then. And that, so I'll just go and observe and. Report back.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
Is council all all right with that?
I am.
And we will go ahead and add. Councilman Albright is a representative of region 3A as a. Committee or board. I don't know exactly what they call themselves. And we'll rely on you to give us a report back at the end of the year to see if we need to or want to stay involved with that.
Good.
Very good. And Tim, did you want to bring up officially in the meeting, anything about what you had had in conversation with with George previous? Maybe just briefly.
Previously discussed. And it kind of got dropped with COVID, the idea of there being. A tablet or even potentially a laptop for each for the members of the council. The commissioners already use those that would eliminate all of the paper and improve our communication. So but. The funding for that would come out of the commissioner's budget. So the question is, do we want to? Ask them to expend the funds to purchase laptops or tablets to do the exploration for the. Council and come back to us with recommendations and then expend the funds to make those purchases. Make that a motion if you'd like, or if we need to just sit on it. It's up to you.
I think the motion will be appropriate with what.
Make a motion to approve the commissioner's expenditure of funds to purchase tablets and or laptops for council members.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
This is just a.
Exploratory.
Okay.
For product and and cost.
Not to approve the cost.
Not to approve the cost, just for them to figure out what it would cost to do it and and what would be the appropriate device. All those in favor, please respond by raising your right hand. Those opposed the same. So George, it's in your court. We appreciate the hard work that you're going to put together on that. Thank you. It was passed unanimously with all board members present. Having nothing else to mean as adjourned.